This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call this August 2nd Council meeting in order.
Would you stand as able and pray with me? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come before you this evening to ask your guidance as our mayor, administrator's staff, and city council meet to discuss and decide measures so important for Sedalia and its citizens. We are thankful for their dedication and service for the betterment of our community. We would also ask and thank our first responders for their dedication to duty, police, fire, ambulance, EMTs, hospital, and all healthcare workers who risked their lives to save ours. We are blessed to live in this greatest country, the last and best hope of mankind, our democratic republic, the United States of America. We remember that so many private citizens and military risked and often gave their lives to create and preserve it for ninety-two hundred fifty years. We are thankful for our great state of Missouri now celebrating two hundred years. Lastly, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. All this we pray in the name of your son, our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with a belief in justice, mercy, and law.
Arlene, roll call please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
He's back.
Okay. I thought he was here.
That guy, he's in New Orleans.
Hey, sorry.
Again.
Okay, Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
She's not online.
I didn't see anyone online. Is she online?
She's not online.
Okay. And Bliss?
Here.
We have some special service awards tonight. Chief Work, come up please.
Eric started with us in July 9th of two thousand and six. I think that was his first supervisor back in the day. So, I'm on color here with me. In two thousand and thirteen, well, he worked on patrol, worked several different shifts. And then he became a full-time detective in two thousand and thirteen. He cleared a lot of cases than others. He also was a CBAG operator, so he does a lot of life checks. So, he's been with us for fifteen years. So, through that time, he also served in different departments. He's done a number of different things for us, and it was solid performance. Appreciate it. Fifteen years of service. Thanks. Brad's celebrating ten years at this point. He began his career July 3rd, two thousand and eleven. He was a patrol officer. He worked for the night operation. He spent time off on a driving force unit. He was also one of our very devoted field training officers. He was promoted to the rank of corporal in two thousand and nineteen. He has also made office service years in two thousand and twenty. He's also a member of the department service team and a fire crack specialist. So, congratulations on ten years.
Now, we have two more of John Simmons and Brad. You guys come up. I know you're very shocked. Yeah, seems like John's made a couple of stories.
Very big, it feels like. I don't really... You know, we've been a lot of changes made. The deposit, Brad is part of that group. That was part of their group. This guy, he used to work with a hundred, I don't know how many different... I got a three word... I want to keep on the night, he's just...
Thank you. Thank you. We need to box that for the proven amendments from the last council meeting. Please.
So, move.
All favor.
Aye.
Before discussion of the commission, my name is Zilling. I think when we get to that point tonight, because Kevin wants to say a few words, we're going to go ahead and prove that. On the vote, on the comprehensive plan.
Yes, the comprehensive plan was the big issue that was dealt with during the planning and zoning, and that comes up later in the presentation.
So, we need a motion for...
Motion to accept the planning and zoning minutes. Second.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
So, what happened, Minister, Attorney General Steve Litt?
All right, here we go. We've got one item. In connection with our rebranding efforts over the last year, we identified the need to update the city's website resume. During the strategic planning process in January, council scored Project Six in priorities and approved a hundred thousand dollars in the subsequent budget development. Staffs continued working with Cowles and Associates for finding scope and deliverables for the website redevelopment. Staff recommends approval of the proposal as submitted.
Any council discussion? Arlene, read your orders, please.
Bill number two oh two one dash one eleven, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for a new website design, development, and launch for the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Post.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one eleven, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for a new city website design, development, and launch for the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. And Bliss?
Yes.
So, that's six yes and two absent.
Uh, that's it, I think, John. I thought we'd get by so easy this. Do you want to have two more words, Lawrence? Arlene, sir.
Yes.
Gina.
There's only one item for consideration through the Public Works Committee tonight. As indicated in the animal control strategic plan, the specialized vehicles they use for patrol and transport of animals are at the end of their useful lives and becoming unreliable. Staff has identified a specified truck bed fitted to a one-ton truck body as a more efficient and cost-effective replacement to the current van body style used today. Through the budgeting process, council appropriated fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of one truck fitted with a specialized bed. Using the state bed specifications, staff identified the proper specifications to fit it with the bed designed most efficiently. The lease offered a combination utilizing a Ford S-250 truck. The local Ford dealers were then given the opportunity to provide a quote based on these specifications. Staff recommends awarding the purchase to Red Bull Fords for twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, which is less than the state bed contract and its preference for local purposes in accordance with our procurement policy. Due to the backlog of manufacturing vehicles, each dealer has indicated it will be at least four months for delivery.
Motion to accept. Second.
Kevin can fill in the blank on that, on what we're going to do with the next portion of that, is the body goes on. Just explain that.
Yeah, once we get delivery of the vehicle, and as we mentioned, that it's going to be at least four months, the vehicle will actually be delivered to wherever we're going to procure the truck body from or the bed from, and then they will fit it up with the bed and then deliver it to us. We are currently working through the procurement process of the bed. We know of a location that the budget was based off of, so once we work through all that procurement process, we'll bring that to council.
Apparently, it's very specialized. So, we need a motion, we have a motion to...
I think we already did.
Just the acknowledgement, if that's what they wish. You need to call for the vote. Just one favor.
No.
Just one favor.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Thomas Oldham.
All right, we have five items underneath the Public Works Committee tonight. The first one is a no-cost change order for water tower valve and tee project. During the replacement of failing valves and pipes at the Main Street Water Tower, the contractor recommended improvement. The original specifications for the bolt that houses these valves, tees, pipes, et cetera, are called for a concrete lid. An aluminum lid is available that also contains a manhole access door. The door allows for easy inspection, and a much lighter lid is safer to remove for any future maintenance or repairs that may be needed. Likewise, the lid is less likely to be damaged in the future removal and replacement. The upgrade to the project can be done with no additional cost, however, it will add two weeks to the completion date while the lid is being fabricated.
Any council discussion? Arlene, read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one twelve, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for aluminum bolt lid located at the Main Street Water Tower.
Second. Reading.
Second. Delayed, sorry. It's okay, Tom.
I'm a little tired, so I'm good.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one twelve, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for aluminum bolt lid located at the Main Street Water Tower.
Final passage.
Second. Second. More call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
Six yes and two absent.
I had my little nine-week-old niece this weekend to myself.
Good night, Lois.
Thank you. And I tell you what, working fifty, sixty hours a week at work and doing everything with the city, that little girl can kick my butt more far worse than anything I do here, so. All right, the second item I have tonight is roadway acceptance for the West Tenth Street extension. In connection with the Deerbrook via Phase Three project, the developer extended West Tenth Street from Mitchell Road through the development. So, our city project engineers have verified that this road extension was built to city specifications and standards.
Any council discussion? Arlene, call for the order.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one thirteen, an ordinance accepting a quick claim deed for the West Tenth Street extension and accepting said street for city maintenance to the city of Sedalia, Missouri from E.W. Thompson Incorporated and Missouri Corporation.
Second reading.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Post.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one thirteen, an ordinance accepting a quick claim deed for the West Tenth Street extension and accepting said street for city maintenance to the city of Sedalia, Missouri from E.W. Thompson Incorporated and Missouri Corporation.
Final passage. Second.
More call, please.
Dawson is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
And Oldham?
Yes.
That's six yes and two absent.
Just a quick question, is it finished all the way through, or is it still hanging at the end?
It's still hanging at the end, because there is, this gives them access to Deerbrook Hill, which can come through, goes in and comes out, so. Now, the back design is designed by, I also have a, and it will finish it in, and connect to land drop. That is designed, but I have a prospect that I'm talking to that could possibly change my design. So, it's a lot I have to gather, but there's some...
We won't tell you about it from...
Sorry.
Diane, I will ask you one question because it's been brought up. Can you describe what happened with the curve there instead of a straight shot?
Yes. The description of the land at Deerbrook, I saw, we assumed with the right way, the street right away. When we got the survey, it was this, that it didn't always go through right away. So, we had to redesign our tree so that it would go over, we were going to have fourteen feet between their property and the street right away. So, we just took a little curve in it to get it right next to where our people would be on there.
It's interesting. It'll be a good speaker.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, the third item I have tonight is in reference to an event for big bikers across Missouri. The organizations for the big bikers across Missouri on the Katy event have requested, in coordination with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Parks and Recreation Department, to have an overnight stop in Katy Park. This event is intended to be an annual event that was canceled in two thousand and twenty due to the pandemic. The event was quite successful in two thousand and nineteen, and the attendees were very complimentary of their stay in Sedalia. Since the Code of Ordnance prohibits camping in the parks, they have requested a suspension of this law to allow them to stay overnight on October eleventh in Katy Park.
They're really not big bikers, they're just average size.
They're just average size. If you drove past there when they had it last, there was almost, what, a hundred bikes, I think, maybe more.
We had a great time, I actually sat in karaoke that night.
Where was I?
I wondered.
And they decided to come back.
That was a great night. So, any questions from council? Come on, see, see. No, I think it's close to my house, I don't like it. Three orders, please, Arlene.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one fourteen, an ordinance allowing overnight camping slash parking in Katy Park for the big bikers across Missouri, Bam on the Katy event on Monday, October the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second reading.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Post.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one fourteen, an ordinance allowing overnight camping slash parking in Katy Park for the big bikers across Missouri, Bam on the Katy event on Monday, October the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Final passage.
Second. More call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson is absent. So, that's six yes and two absent.
The fourth item I have tonight is a change order for the Main Street Lift Station rehab. In connection with the work being done to rehabilitate the sewer lift station on Main Street, an aluminum trash basket was noticed in the detailed plan submitted. The engineer design and bid specifications did not specify the materials, so this is what the contractor based their bid on. Staff recommends that an upgrade to the stainless steel is prudent, as it would greatly increase the life of these components. The contractor quoted a cost of two thousand three hundred and ten dollars for the upgrade, and staff recommends approval of the change order to add it to the contract.
Any questions from council? Arlene, read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one fifteen, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for upgraded waste baskets at the Main Street Lift Station.
Second reading.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Post.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one fifteen, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for upgraded waste baskets at the Main Street Lift Station.
Final passage.
Second. More call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. And Bliss?
Yes.
Six yes and two absent.
My fifth and final item tonight for the Public Works Committee is the change order for the two thousand and eighteen Water Systems Improvement Contract. In connection with the water main replacement project, the contractor has reached substantial completion on the portion in the area of Fifth Street and Montgomery Avenue. As is customary in those contracts, estimates are made for the quantities of pipe fittings, et cetera, and then adjusted to actual quantities during the construction. In addition, you may recall that a change order for another contract was approved last meeting to add the cost to do a live tap to tie two areas of the project together, which was necessary because the contractor missed in the design installation of a tee and valve. This change order deducts from the contract the valves and tee that were not installed. Further, the contractor did not complete this part of the project within the period specified in the contract. So, after consideration is given for weather-related delays, ten days of liquidated damages were applied at five hundred dollars per day. The staff recommends approval of the change order to finalize this contract for a net decrease of fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
This is the second meeting that Tom has come with the deduction. This, the other one, this friend doing that, you're right in the ballpark now.
You're doing good. I think Brenda's making you look good up here.
This is great. We never have these, once a year maybe, of deductions.
Next time, I'm going to take it out of your chest.
That's all right. Your student.
I'll double the cost next week, just so it's even out for me.
Arlene, read your orders.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one sixteen, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for a deduction in costs resulting from construction adjustments made to the two thousand and eighteen Water System Improvement Contract four B.
Second reading.
Second. All favor.
Post.
Bill number twenty twenty one dash one sixteen, an ordinance authorizing change order number one for a deduction in costs resulting from construction adjustments made to the two thousand and eighteen Water System Improvement Contract four B.
Final passage.
Second. More call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson is absent. And Bogus?
Yes.
That's six yes and two absent.
That is all I have for the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Thomas. Mr. Goff, Jeff Lehman for Andrew Dawson tonight.
Yeah, Andrew's down on the beach, if you all want to really know, so anyway.
I hate to tell you this, the chief worker's down there.
Yeah, I know, he's got a nice little pan going there. Now, that being said, I have three items for tonight. First one being the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one Comprehensive Plan that has come to us now. It's gone through planning and zoning, which was accepted at their meeting, and I'll turn this over for a little bit to our city administrator to do a little discussion of this, if you'd like.
Sure. You know, this has been a long project, really started about a year ago, and it is our long-range planning, if you will, that we put together. And, you know, it's important on several different levels, but it goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission because a big piece of it is planning on land use and those kinds of things, and then it becomes not only that planning tool, but also the communication tool to let developers and really everybody know what the direction we are intending or what we would like for things to go. And the pieces of, you know, how do we coexist, or how do we have a cohesive community, if you will, of, you know, where residential areas are not, you know, right next to or mixed in with industrial, and commercial is in the right spot and all of that, so that you have a good planned community, if you will. And in that, you know, it's kind of an important piece, I guess, is that that then becomes kind of the legal basis for us to be able to, or for planning and zoning to really be able to say, you know, make effective decisions on, you know, whether or not we should approve rezoning or should approve a variance or a special use of those kinds of things. And, you know, a big thing that is involved in that is to not be arbitrary in your decision. So, if you plan that out ahead of time and know how all the pieces fit together and how they work together, then that eliminates that arbitrary nature, if you will. What I'll leave out, John?
I don't think you left anything, I think, I think, for a favor, your decision, and it's back to the top end of the plan. So, it's all a...
Yeah. I guess another piece, I guess, that you just, that triggered my mind, is it also becomes that long-range planning tool for our infrastructure, you know, where should we do the roads, where should we be focusing on increasing sewer capacity, water capacity, those kinds of things, and how can we invest dollars wisely to get the most benefit out of that growth and where that needs to go? I'm sorry.
Kevin Layton's terrible, being the...
Yeah.
And really, Kevin, I want to say a few words.
Yeah, I don't think I can, maybe I haven't already said about it, I just feel like I need to take the opportunity, you know, a big part of the comprehensive plan is getting everyone feedback, so I just want to thank, physically, the comprehensive plan, my experience has been began, and try and adhere from that, and so they've, that's really, they've given their time, that's the meaning of the plan, or whatever that is, hopefully, when people look at the comprehensive plan today, see the hard work that a lot of people are putting in, and have a vision for our community, so I'm really proud of this, for this, I'm proud of serving on that committee, I'm proud of serving somebody, and I think we're very excited to be in the conversation.
Yeah. Well, and we greatly appreciate your, everybody's work. I mean, we did, I thought we were very successful in getting a lot of good community engagement and a lot of good thoughts and buy-in and feedback, if you will, about where it should go. Dan?
I would say, you know, you should go with Kevin and John both, because it's a lot of...
And I know the council, you know, when they were, you know, individuals debating about structure of CBAG, it wasn't easy, you know, through that analysis, I think they came just totally realizing, hey, I've done some work for the city before, and they knew to, if we were happy the whole time, no, we weren't, we had definitely questions about it. So, I think along the way, P and G Commission's done a great job, and now they have a tool to be more effective. Definitely lived on that P and G for some time, minus the barrier, it's just fallen in place. We had, you know, we had a fun time with that of our leader in that group, and that set up the place. Thank you.
Your Honor, I would encourage those of us that are involved with the city and have a true interest in what's going on, is that you get on the website, once you post it up there to take a look at it, and I think you can also call and have a copy made for you, if you would like to do so. So, it's very comprehensive, it is a lot of reading, but it has a lot of data in it that was compiled. It actually was compiled over a number of years because CBAG had access to some stuff they were doing on other things. It was kind of a neat deal to go through, so thank you all.
It's not going to happen overnight, and it appears to me it's been in a good direction. John?
One with the doctors tonight, there will be fifty sound copies presented to the community, so we'll have hard copies available.
It's a hundred pages of easy reading.
Easy reading, it's colorful.
Lots of pictures. Yeah.
Dawson sort of taking it with him to the beach, right?
You know, Charlie? We need to vote, we need to...
Call for the resolution.
Do we get a vote on that? There's a resolution.
Resolution nineteen thirty-three, a resolution of the city of Sedalia, Missouri, accepting and supporting the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one Comprehensive Plan for the city... the adoption of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Soudaya, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second. All favoritists?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, my next item has to do with a quick claim deed for 2500 East Seventh Street and through the county in sales tax, of which we have gone after, have. We are now looking at a quick claim deed to that property. And, John, do you have anything you want to bring out to this?
I believe this was a 2016 demolition.
That's correct.
The owner decided that they could no longer care for the property and wanted to just turn it over to the city, and it was part of the process with the county tax sales.
Thank you, John. Any other council discussions? Read the ordinance, please, starting.
Bill number 2021-117, an ordinance approving the acceptance of a quick claim deed for property located at 2500 East Seventh Street in the City of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
All favoritists?
Aye.
Bill number 2021-117, an ordinance approving the acceptance of a quick claim deed for property located at 2500 East Seventh Street in the City of Soudaya, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Call call please.
Foster is absent, Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson is absent, Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Six yes and two absent.
Your Honor, the last item I have tonight has to do with, as we started in our July 6 meeting, we're trying to develop a lodging code that aims at preventing and adding assurance of safety of lodging guests and to help reduce the criminal activity that are at some of those establishments. And I remind you that there are some of these establishments. Since that meeting, we've continued to vet, we've had information that has come from hotel workers and their management as we struggle to improve this and see where we need to go with this. And at this point, I'm going to turn this over to our city administrator, and I think we're going to take a look at this a little more in depth again tonight. It looks like we have some people from that industry here, and I'm sure, as we've talked, that we're going to allow them to have some voices. So here we go.
Great, thank you. And, yes, and this is set up to be a work session style format, so it's to encourage the debate and the discussions, or the healthy discussions about where we should go and where we can go. And so to start it off, I thought we did get some comments back from some of the hotel owners and management staff, and we were able to address some of those. We have also done some further vetting with our legal counsel to, you know, to make sure we hit the right spot and all of that. So in going through this, what I thought I would do is I've taken the presentation that we went through in early July and have updated that, and it's really kind of section by section, and I will show you where we've made some changes and where we've had some concerns raised, and then how we've addressed that. So kind of again in review, to set it up, is the first thing is, is why are we even looking at this? And, you know, first and foremost, it's public safety, and we could really kind of stop there and just say it's public safety. It's, but when we look at lodging for specifically, there is some special considerations that at least we look at for the transient guest, if you will. They have to rely more on us to ensure their safety. There are a lot of times they're booking their stay sight unseen, they, you know, by the time they get here, they haven't seen the location and are unable to, if it's less than their desires, standards, then they're unable to go elsewhere, because a lot of times, you know, especially during certain times of this year or of the year here, the hotels are all booked up. So when they get here, if it's got problems, they can't just simply go elsewhere. There are other remedies for unsanitary or unsafe conditions are more difficult, who do they complain to, and then by the time their complaints are addressed, you know, their stay is really over, so it's, you know, getting a little closer to home helps us address them. And then the guests are less able to inspect what's around them and know what's around them, of what may harm them. For example, they don't know necessarily what's in the room next door to them, and so it has those special considerations for it. Further, from a public safety standpoint, and again from criminal activity, the anonymity and short-stay nature for lodging establishments really provides cover for criminal activity. Chief Work, you know, has often talked to us about the problem-oriented policing models where you focus on the three-legged stool, so to speak, and one of those stools is, or one of those legs is the environment. And so what we're working on here is working on that environment piece of that problem-oriented policing to help eliminate that environmental concerns or environmental opportunities for criminal activity. We do know from a lot of what we've been working on and, again, looking at the data and trying to attack how we can eliminate crime or prevent crime. We have noted that there are in some establishments, certainly not all, but some establishments there are a high incidence of criminal activity, to include drug dealing, robbery and trading and stolen goods and prostitution. Also, we know that once, you know, once the criminals know that they have this place that's favorable for them to conduct their criminal activity, they will tend to congregate. Criminals want to deal with criminals, so they will congregate in a place that is fruitful for their, what they're trying to accomplish. And then, again, kind of the special consideration when law enforcement is able to prove that there's a pattern of criminal activity going on in a certain place, then, you know, that's the beauty of lodging for the criminals, is they can just simply pick up and move, it's real easy for them, they check out of that room, they go to a different hotel or a different, even a different room in the same hotel. By then, you know, if you have a warrant, well, that warrant's not for that room, so now you've got to start all over with the process of proving that that's happening. So again, some of the special concerns or special reasons why we're looking at this whole code is trying to address those issues. Also, there is a perception of, in community economic development considerations, this certainly is not nearly as important as the private, as the public safety, but it's still a consideration, and so I think it bears mentioning. Quite often, when somebody comes to town and visits our town, if they have a bad experience at a motel, that's their only experience of the city. They leave, and they paint the whole city with that brush that, oh, my gosh, don't go to Soudaya, it's a dump, it's, you know, this, that, and the other, which, in my opinion, that affects the other hotels just as much as it does the whole city, because they're going to get painted with that same brush, they're not, they didn't know that they could go right down the street and kind of much nicer stay and had a bunch of nicer experience. Our tourism, of course, is a vital, vital part of the community, and tourism depends on maintaining that confidence that, you know, hey, if they come to Soudaya, they're going to have a nice experience. And then also, we do quite often get numerous complaints, and unfortunately, under our current system, there's not much we can do. Basically, what we're able to do is tell them to call the state, that's about all we can do at this point. So this lodging code will help us in addressing that. Just a little background here, you know, in some of our research, this is one of the things that we looked up, and just a little headline there that Blue Springs Hotel was successful, or Blue Springs was successful with their hotel ordinance to decrease crime by 50% in less than one year. So it is, does have some background and is based in some results in other places. Our approach, again, we did quite a bit of research, we reviewed the state statutes and the regulations produced by the state. We consulted with our legal counsel, how, and we're blessed that they also work with several different communities, and so they are able to know firsthand what other communities are doing and know in-depth of their ordinances and how they approach things, and so they were a great resource to us to tell us how other communities are dealing with this and what's, what's worked and what hasn't worked. We consulted with the county presiding commissioner, the prosecutor, and the health department, and what their views are and how they're approaching things. We reviewed their recently adopted county code, and I just have a note there that note that they are, they work under different state statutes than the cities do, and so they are limited by their state statutes in that they can only impose regulations that are, prevent the disease or from spreading of disease. It's under, I can't remember those state statutes, it's 300, I think it is, that they work under, and we'll talk about how the city can approach it in a little different manner. We reviewed several communities' codes, most notably the Blue Springs that I just mentioned, the headline from them, Kansas City, Branson, and Portland, and I'll say that if you read much of our code or our current draft, you can see a lot of that came out of Branson, which, as everybody knows, is a very tourism-dependent community, so we picked on theirs a lot, and then also Blue Springs, most particularly for the crime prevention piece. And then since the last presentation, we have met with some of the hotel owners and management and got some great input and some discussion points. So with that, we, again, we approach it from the business license standpoint. We are under our authority, or we get our authority from state statute number nine, chapter 94, that gives us the authority to regulate businesses, and so that's where we chose to put it. And within chapter 12 of our Soudaya Code of Ordinances is where we deal with business license, and so this code or this proposed code just adds Article 9 for specifics on lodging establishments within the business licensure process. The ordinance, again, focuses on two issues, safety and sanitary. So specific considerations, and again, I'll go through this kind of section by section. The first section that we, as we talked last time, is we intend for it to apply to all lodging establishments. There was a concern raised about it applying to State Fair Community College and the dormitory, and so I went back to the state regulations, and the state regulations have some good language about how they're exempting dormitories for State Fair, or for colleges and universities. And so you can see there in the red what I'm proposing to add to that is to exempt out dormitories that are only used for the students and faculty, and then it also allows for churches and church camps and those kinds of things where you're having dormitories. So that's what I propose to add to that so that we don't have, it does not apply to the dormitory college. And if anybody wants debate or has a difference of opinion, please stop me and we'll discuss it at that point. There was a concern that raised regarding added fees and additional burden on the hotels, and so my response to that is, is this, again, is part of the business licensure process, it's just adding process to the business license, not a fee. So it's still the same fee for the business license, and under our current schedule of fees, you can see there that the hotels are $2.75 per room and motels are $1.75 per We, the next section, we talk about requiring inspections, and so the concerns that were raised regarding the language in that was, is are we creating new positions and costs to the taxpayers? And no new positions are created by disorderment, and are inspections announced was the next concern? And just for edification, kind of the concerns will be in the square bullets, and then the responses will be in the round, just to keep track there, but the, are inspections announced was the concern, and yes, for issuance or renewal, we will, much like we do for the fire code, those annual inspections, they will call and make an appointment and work with the hotels to set up a time where we can come by and do the inspection for the issuance or renewal of the business license. It would not be those for complaint-driven investigations, and just there that the city must reserve the right to unannounced investigations if there's complaints, to follow up on those complaints. So, you know, again, I think that's reasonable, in my opinion, but we're certainly open for Another concern that was raised?
I have a question.
Sure. Please step to the mic.
We'd be happy to.
We're on the line.
Hi, Kelly Yelton, I introduced myself to each one of you earlier. I'm here on behalf of Michael and David Slaughterbeck, who run the Comfort Inn, 3600 West Broadway. One of my concerns would be that, I understand, having been an assistant principal, assistant superintendent, worked with boards, city councils, the police, medical, worked in education for several years, retired, loved this community, came back. As I hear you share information, the first thing that comes to my mind is I hear a, an ordinance being designed to address safety and security, and the implication, and I understand the ordinance and its needs. I've returned, I've seen, I've experienced in my career everything that you're speaking to right now from a concern standpoint. The part that I think we failed to address and really consider in this, in all of my years, in all the statistics, and all, and even looking at Soudaya's crime rate, 95% of us here today throughout this community are family, friends, are good people. We're talking about 5% or less people create 90% of the problems. It's the same in education, it's the same in community, and it's the same right here. I understand what you're doing. I used to do this as an assistant superintendent, work with city councils. I would ask that after you go through your points, which I would say that I would have questions on city must reserve right of unannounced investigations, I know what that meant as an administrator. If I had a parent call up and say that a teacher's classroom wasn't running the way she wanted, guess what? That meant I got to walk in anytime I wanted. It doesn't feel good, and we had to change that process and we had to change that policy. I think that's what you're going to find when you go through some of these things and you implement this in the way that you've constructed it, that you're going to find that some of the things that you're proposing to implement aren't going to work the way that you intended, and that's to provide a safe and secure. I do think that 95% of the people that you're talking about in this community are great people. We have good things going on here in Soudaya, and that's why I retired and came back to Soudaya. I think we're forgetting about that 95%, and we're applying this... And we're applying this to everyone. Ninety-five percent of your businesses of the forty-eight establishments, ninety-five percent of them are here for the right reason. We're running a solid business, we're doing the right thing. When I go through and I read this for the first time today, it, it doesn't feel good. And it feels like you're criminalizing those of us that are doing the right thing. And one of the pieces is that unannounced investigation. What's that look like? What are you anticipating it to look like? Is it because mean old grandpa felt like his breakfast wasn't warm enough, so you're going to come and investigate? What does that look like? Because when you do a blanket statement like that, that opens it up for anything and everything. And I ask that you really, go through your presentation today. Great. But sit down with us in a roundtable, not my sister calling you individually, but sit down with us, have conversations, talk to us about what we know and what we experience. Because guess what? We want the exact same thing that you do, and that's a safe and secure environment. Because if we don't have that, this community is gone. Everything that I was raised with and everything that I know about this community dissipates with that. But if we allow that five percent to control everything else that we do, we lose the ninety-five. They will leave, whether they're businesses, whether they're families, or whether they're community people, they will leave. I applaud you for attempting to implement an ordinance to help address the safety and security issues, but I really hope, before you even make a vote down the road, that you take the time to create a stakeholder meeting, invite those of us that are truly impacted by this type of legislation, by this type of ordinance, sit down with us. Let's partner together and let's find reasonable solutions that we can all go home at night and sleep well. That's all I have to say, and that's what I hope you consider.
You have some other thoughts on that?
I agree. I mean, to some degree, I, I agree with the stakeholders idea. I think, I think in order for us to get an ordinance that works, we've got to get the support of the business, business people in the community, you know, to some degree. I, I don't have any problem with, if we work on this and delay it a couple meetings, if it gives us an ability to incorporate some, some of the people.
I really appreciate that.
You know, the problem, but I will say this to you, the problem is, you guys show up, a variety of different people show up.
I'm not even in the hotel business, but I'll be here if that's what you need. If you need, I'm here.
I have a sister, or we'll get her some patients from a part of the profile of lodging people, but we won't, let me say, but we won't get participation from the people that are, that, that represent the problem areas. But we, somehow, we've got to address that, you know what I mean? Right? We've got, we've got to get, we've got to get everybody's attention.
I agree with you, and I'm going to tell you that my experience in key stakeholder meetings, you actually go knock on the door and you invite them to come and join you. You talk to the people, you talk to the police and say, who is your best source for you to come and join us in this meeting and talk to us about your problem? How about the, the person that's having to process all the permits and all that stuff? Have them come, because that's, she's going to have to do that stuff. We invite these people to these meetings to help us make good conscious decisions and good ideas. Now, it's not going to be perfect, no matter what you put out there.
Absolutely.
But if you involve more people, as you said, Steve, we're going to end up with more success.
Well, I just, I want my influence from you.
I would agree with you.
The other thing that your sister mentioned, and it's not here, is training. And.
One hundred percent.
Same type of deal, though.
Absolutely.
You guys provide people, if, if we develop a training process, I would, would be certain that, I'm sorry.
Kelly.
Oh, Kelly, now, not, I mean, Michael and.
Michael and David.
All you guys will have employees there for training.
Absolutely.
Right? But again, it's not a, a good process in the city unless we figure out a way to get all the lodging providers in that training, and I'm not.
I'm going to use an analogy, and it may not be a great one, but I'm going to use it.
Can I have a comment? Look, there's nothing. Dana?
And listening to what you have presented to us, I, I totally understand what you're saying. And perhaps when we get ready to go into this, where it says, no, for complaint-driven investigations, I agree that we might want to look at, for those that are doing the complaining, make them take ownership of that complaint by putting it in writing. Because I know that with the school system, anybody can walk in there and say somebody did something.
You betcha.
Because they didn't put it in writing. But sometimes if you make them take ownership of the complaint that they're putting in, then that complaint gets stronger, that complaint. So maybe that's something that we need to look at as well.
I, I, I don't, one, I don't really see many of the, the issues that we have in our ordinance that we're developing that show a lot of overreach. I think a lot of them, as I stated before, are normal business practices that many hotels across the country already perform. We're just making sure that those who don't perform those business practices do for the safety. However, I, I see the, the benefit in hearing, hearing those stakeholders. I, I go back, everything that we've brought up and developed should already be normal business practice.
Do you have any comments?
I have, I've, I've had conversations with a number of the hoteliers that we have here. And I have a question for them. Why has it taken to this point, the, the city has had to take this action to start this, instead of you all knowing that this problem is out there and come with blinders on, and not approached this earlier with a, with a solution to handle that, instead of where we're sitting right now?
I think that's a fair question. I think a lot of times, business owners, parents, people in the community, that ninety-five percent, entrust that we have a safe and secure community. And I think there's a number of us that have walked around with blinders on for a long time. And I think getting together, regardless of why we're just not showing up, we're showing up. And so I think you embrace that, and I think you take that opportunity. And I think that, as Tom said, I'm sure there are a number of things that we agree with. I, I would wholeheartedly say there are a number of things in that ordinance that are checkboxes easy, but there are a lot of things in that ordinance that I would say need to reconsider. And we may have some other ideas for things that might need to be implemented to help you also in that process.
The, the process we're going through, though, right now, some of our attention because of what's been going on, okay? And it has been going on for a long time. So therefore, back to the thing with the group coming forward first, and, you know, that's, that ninety-five percent you talked about, as everybody's doing well. And I agree. And, and we're truly not trying to give anybody a black eye. On the other hand, there's a handful out there that are creating that black eye and the coordination. Okay, so let's, let's let that part go. We're at this point right now. The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to have the chief come forward with some of the presentation stuff and the figures and facts that he has, to get it on record to show what we're really, why we're dealing and why we're sitting here tonight. And, and I would kind of say, with chief coming up too, you know, we're, we're responsible, we have a feel of responsibility to public safety. And, and so it's not, we're not trying to signal anybody out, we're trying to do a job on, on that front, too, and keep that ninety-five percent safe. And, so.
Can you come forward? Thank you.
Kelly, thank you.
Which specific numbers would you like?
Let's go for our, you don't need to name names or specific to the, the facilities or anything.
Okay.
Let's pick the numbers that we have for calls, and you can just use A, B, C, and as a, you know, facility A, facility B, the number of calls, and what types of calls we're dealing with.
And can I spill one off there? And two thousand seventeen to two thousand or nearly present, because I want people to understand, we're getting a, an increasing number of calls every year.
That, that was the reason for my original question, is because it's, it's gone back so far that, you know, again, seventeen is four years, but it's even longer than it started.
Yeah.
So now it's gotten to the point that it's out of control.
Well, and the, the discussion began over this and, and operations that we have conducted to deal with some of the increased call load at specifically three locations, what is called A, B, and C. And during that time, we, we ran reports through our system, determined what those, with those locations each year from two thousand seventeen on, and that's been in, in kind of some of the internal discussion in that. So of those locations, we'll call location A, we've already been to that location ninety-nine times this year. Then we've been in, in twenty, now, we did see a drop in numbers in twenty with some, with all of this. Well, our calls for service were down a little bit in twenty, but those were also, we were trying not to engage with as many of these people as, during that time as well with COVID. There was ninety calls that year at location A, there was ninety-eight in nineteen, and then in eighteen, that location, there was sixty-nine. So you're seeing that drop off in those years in seventy-nine and seventeen. So that location went to the point from, over that four, and basically this being the fifth year, that our calls were up to, like this current year, where we're over already six months, because this ended in July, six, seven months in, we're now exceeding what we've done in entire years. The type of calls that we're seeing, disturbances, domestics, nine-one-ones, overdoses, medical calls, and then also some self-initiated activity from our officers, knowing there's our high-call areas, they're checking the subjects there, they're checking vehicles there, they're checking for warrants. That's in the, the first location that we've talked about that is A. Another location, this has kind of become the lower one, which is good, we've seen some improvement there. In location B, that is in two thousand, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one, we've been there seventy times though this year already. In twenty, again, we saw a little bit of dip, we were at that location ninety times in twenty, in two thousand nineteen, sorry, I'm having to go through these, broke them down individually. We're at this location a hundred and sixty-seven times in two thousand nineteen, and then in eighteen, fifty-six times, and then I've stuck seventeen in there as well, apologize, I've got this stuck together, fifty-six times. So you see that location, also, those numbers, as we're going through those years, are increasing each year. And then C is the one that we see the most activity at, generally over the, the years. We've already been there a hundred and fifty-eight times this year, and location we'll call C. I'm sorry, and in that past location, we saw a lot of the same types of calls, the disturbances, the medicals. We saw more disturbances at that other one. This one, the hundred and fifty-eight times, again, being a higher call load, we're also going there more often to try and prevent problems from occurring. In two thousand twenty, a hundred and seventy-nine times. Two thousand nineteen, two hundred and eighty-nine times. Two thousand eighteen, ninety-three times. And two thousand seventeen, fifty-three times. So again, that location is also considerably spiked. So these are the, these are the numbers I've been carrying with me each time we, we have this discussion, just in case. Again, the area checks and vehicle checks have increased with that in, in an effort to prevent it, but we've had several disturbances, disturbances with weapons, and then some major incidents of those where we've served search warrants for stolen goods and drugs.
Okay, with the ordinance that's proposed, and an ordinance at all, depending on what or how it comes out in the end, what are you looking for to be able to work with the hoteliers in a better way?
So, you know, I mean, the, the ordinance is, is many pages long, there's really just one page that, that deals with the, the criminal aspect of it that's in our perspective. We need, we need cooperation, and some of these locations, for example, we've even had to serve search warrants on the hotel to get video from a crime that occurred against one of their patrons. So we need that cooperation, we need to know who's, who those people are, we need the cooperation with video, we need the cooperation with when they're, when we're having difficulty with, a lot of calls for service, excuse me, and there's certain folks that are staying there, that they get them removed, that they take that action. We can't just go in and remove someone from a hotel unless the management says that person needs to leave. And obviously, legal violations would give them grounds to do that, but that's something that, that in some locations, again, like the city administrator said, not all, there's several hotels and motels that we have excellent cooperation with, and they work well with us, but in some of these, we don't, the specific A, B, and C are those locations. And in those places, if we need a name, if we need video surveillance, if we need cooperation with determining who the guest is, we do not get that cooperation. And as the city administrator said many times, then, once that's known, more, more, that type of behavior becomes the norm at that extent.
Can I have some, do you have any other questions? A few questions. Now, this is probably the least, the considerations, but I notice if a person rents a room, do you have a right to go to the back of the deck and ask who your neighbors are? I mean, I mean, does a hotel know who your neighbors are on each side of you?
That, that's something that, I mean, we don't necessarily go back and, the neighbors, and I wouldn't be able to speak on that portion of it if, if they went to the motel and requested that.
So, um, can I just, yeah, so we're just discussing this all, or, so, yeah, I, I think this is all together, all three parties, all, all three institutions, being able to get what works best, or all, sometimes the police and the chairmen would make orders.
So you, you all are talking about doing something different than what we're doing tonight?
Um, maybe a little more in-depth. We have us, us communicating with the police department, stakeholders, something, another open meeting like this.
Well, we, we unfortunately, we have to do it at open meetings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean.
Yeah, I thought we could have open meetings. Are, is that, are you saying that we have open council meetings, or we have to, if we create some kind of advisory group? I mean, obviously that.
Well, they have to be open meetings, yeah. I mean, the sunshine laws.
Yeah, and that's why I'll have.
And that's what this meeting was set up for, was to be the work session to go through this.
Right.
And determine where we need to go, so.
So do we invite all of the stakeholders, all of the hotel owners for tonight?
Not all of them, there's not, the ones that we've been discussing.
This is, this is also posted this last week, or Friday.
And there was an article in the paper and, you know, I mean, yeah.
Really? I guess when I talk about a key stakeholder meeting, yes, things are posted in the paper, but when you know you have something this serious and this important to discuss and impactful, and as the, the chief talked about, it does help to personally invite other entities, and not just the businesses, not just the hotels, but someone, I mean, clientele, have you, I mean, chamber members or, I mean, because this is really impactful for more than just hotels and police departments, and yes, we want a partnership. We want to partner with the police, we want a partnership with the EMPs. But what does that look like? And to sit down and do that in an open meeting, more informally, around a table, not a, you know, less formal format, I think you can garner additional information, have open conversations, and, and walk out with solutions. That feels. and, and walk out with solutions that feel good for everybody. Maybe not those three hotels, which is that 5%, that even if you put this ordinance in place, there's a good chance they're still not going to comply.
But that, that being said.
Yes.
The ordinance steps in at that point.
I agree.
Enforces the, and we don't have that, that's the piece that we don't have.
And, and that's where I think having those conversations with us, we could better understand where you're coming from with some of the things that you're trying to do. And then that makes your community buy in and partner with you even better.
I believe the gentleman behind you.
Dale, do you want to step up? Come on up.
I'm the lead cabinet.
I, I, now I, I tend to agree, I'm agreeing with Kelvin, this is what this had been intended for, I mean, I see where you're trying to get a benefit out of, and you're going to want to make it more personalized to each hotel, but then again, this was, this was, that is what this session was for. Is there another issue besides the right to reserve?
Yeah, but I wish, we were going to go through the whole section.
Yeah.
Or inspection.
That we didn't, so there's, there's even more to discuss.
Oh, yeah, there's several, yeah, we were going to go through.
Can you continue on with the presentation, Tim?
Yeah, go ahead. That's one word.
The imminent health or safety hazard mitigation, the closed area until corrected. The concern raised was can the CBO close the business without discussion or cure time? And the response there is, is only where imminent threats require such for mitigation. And that's, you know, again, the, the language there is restated there, but it's, this is only in that section where, you know, they have to do, they have to take steps to stop life-threatening issues.
The key word is imminent.
Yes, and, and life-threatening, so. The next section was non-imminent hazards corrective action plan, and then the concern raised was that this section has a cure time, but others do not, and so I just offer that the explanation there is, is where there, where there is no imminent danger, and that's in this language, is if there's no imminent danger, then yeah, we, I think it is appropriate to have a cure time and allow, and to work with the, the hotel management to, to cure issues that we can have or give time to, allow time to make those corrections without endangering somebody's life or threatening their health. The relegation or suspension of license for non-compliance, that's basically the, the enforcement mechanism to, to when we don't have compliance with this lodging code. And there was a concern raised that who is the finance director and is the new physician? And no, is the finance director is the current physician, and is the physician responsible for managing the business licensure process under the current code? So again, this is under the business license, and so that's why that, that position is referred to. Another section on other remedies, including the injunction to relieve, is where we get the enforcement of the code. The sanitation and housekeeping sections is, is, it requires cleaned and maintained between each guest, and then there were some concerns raised over the section where it requires a weekly checklist for continued occupancy. One of the concerns raised was regarding the continuously occu, what is a continuously occupied room and duration, and so I went back again to the, the state regulations, or they suggested, I'm sorry, that we go over to the state regulations and three days wellness checks and reviews, and, and so I went back to the state regulations, and yes, this, this language is out of the state regulations. And so just to clarify, I suggest that we modify the language just to clarify what is continuous or, you know, and it's that, you know, for a weekly checklist to apply, it would be the occupying the same room for more than seven days. If they're not occupying the same room for more than seven days, then it's cleaned and maintained between each guest or a, or a new, new, new person gets in that room. So that's, that's the intent there. Weekly checklist for continued occupancy con, continued is, is concern raised regarding if all hotels are hard, have hard-wired smoke detectors, and if exceptions will be allowed. And I, I, I don't have the answer to that, I, I have to review the fire code and don't know if the fire code is, that requires that all lodging establishments have hardwired, so.
You're taking your head, you want to say, hold on a minute, that's right, as you asked, you complain, that's one, one, we get, we call in, someone rents a room, and the previous office, the maintenance, the post secretary, that's every time.
Continuing, the concern raised is the allowance of extension courts, and they've quoted the, a, a state regulation, and so I, I suggest review of the code to potentially modify the language to where we can in certain instances or allow for approval of those. You know, I mean, I understand the, the issues of, there's more things plugged in now, so, so I, I think we can offer some living room, there are some special circumstances there, so I would recommend that.
Kelvin, if ever, I want to speak out on these issues.
On the extension court, I believe, I would have to refer to the extension court, but I believe that our, our, our allowed, that would be, but then allowed prior to the extension court.
Again, another concern raised is, is no insects or, or their, or pests or their remains, and again, I, I suggest some discussion here, I mean, really what, what we're aiming this piece of the code at is, is we just want to make sure that, you know, if somebody's staying there for, for over a week, that we haven't started an infestation that we're not aware of, so we just aren't asking that, that the hotel owners check to make sure that there's not a bedbug infestation that's already started in that, that somebody that stays there with. Another concern raised is, is the, regarding the no cooking appliances or other fixed items, and, and this, this hotel was, had mentioned that they don't allow cooking in the rooms, but we're concerned about us forcing them to police that. And again, we're, we're not asking them to police that, what we're doing is, is we're, we're asking you to, to look and check weekly. Another concern was, is are, are we going to inspect rooms where the guests are staying there, and no, that was not the intent, we're not looking to disrupt the guests. This is why we're asking in that, in that checklist, is that when you're in there providing the other service that is already required by the state reg, that you provide that check to make sure that it's not happening, so.
What is the recourse then if it did happen? And you were to walk in and have to identify that there was something going on, that we didn't notice, but we have had that happen? So is there a penalty being assessed to us, or is there?
Not to you, no, we're, we're asking you to, to log in on your checklist, if, if you don't allow it, then you have the opportunity to evict that guest, and you can call the police to help, you know, to trespass him and, and get him out. Does that make sense?
Makes more sense than the language did itself, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Sanitary glasses, sanitary glasses and utensils if provided, and the concern was requir, requirement for the individually wrapped list for drinking glasses, and I missed that, and I think that's a good point, you know, I, I haven't seen individually wrapped lists either, and so I think that was a, a good point, that we shouldn't require something they can't get, so I took that out, and, you know, I apologize, that was copied out of somebody else's ordinance and, and doesn't make sense, so. So I suggest taking that out. Garbage and refuse handling and removal, removal, the concern raised was regarding what constitutes a pest-proof container, and, and again, I think that's a good point, so we, I suggest eliminating that to be consistent with what the state regulations, and that's, that's essentially now what, what the state requires, is the leak-proof and durable garbage containers. Insect and rodent control, concern raised regarding how these provisions apply to other businesses and why not the same? Part of the question was specific to rate bedbugs, and yes, this does apply to other businesses, but I, I guess I don't understand how bedbugs would, would apply to another business other than lodging, but, but it, you know, there is insect and rodent control in the health code as well, so, for food handling, so. Professional pest services, or with approval, they can self-treat bedbugs with a heat treat equipment specifically designed for this use. There was concern raised regarding also allowing wet treatment, as they called it, or pesticides to, to treat with bedbugs, so I suggest some modified language there to where we can, the chief building official can, can approve the, not only the heat treating with the, with the equipment design for that, and frankly, this was aimed at, we know of some locations that are treating head, bedbugs with a propane torch, and we don't want to allow that, so we, we want limited to these, these types of, of treatments. And then, yes, by all means, if, you know, if there's a liquid pesticide that, that treats them, we don't want to require something that, that, when there's another alternative there that, that works just as well. And then also, if, to point out, is if, if those methods fail, then the chief building official or their designated can, can require professional services to be used. There was a suggestion, and this was brought up in the discussion, there was a suggestion regarding offering training to hotels and recognizing and eliminating criminal activity as was done in the past, and this code encourages these cooperat, cooperative efforts with lodging establishment management to eliminate criminal activity, the suggestion is well taken towards that end. I mean, I, I welcome that, I think that, Chief Work, I know welcomes that, so we all welcome that, that opportunity and that spirit of cooperation.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I said, I mean, we can have that without it being in the ordinance.
Correct.
And, and chief expressed that to me today, and I want to work with these folks, and so if nothing else goes forward here, let's, let's try to, and, and pop a word, let's try to.
To your comments, it's not the 95% that are, that are working with us, that's the problem, it's the 5% that won't accept the training.
But the 95 still need it.
Yeah, yep.
We still need it, we need that help, we need that support.
Well, and not only. Because when we run them out of there, you don't want them coming to you.
Absolutely.
We want training, and we want you guys cooperating with the police, the police cooperating with you, and I, my experience, at least on the blue side, and knowing some of you all, that's going to happen, you know, so let's, let's get that back in place, or let's really go forward and try to get business and, and police working together towards accountability.
Okay. On the section where we, the code, or the draft code or proposed code, talks about complying with the state statutes on guest registry and make available to the police. There were a few different concerns raised here, one was the raised, concern raised the right to privacy of the guest, and the response there is, is that the state law already requires the registry to be kept, and there's the, there's the state statute there, 315 oh seventy-nine, of the revised, the restate statute. There was also a Supreme Court case cited for Los Angeles, and it was against the, some hotel owners association, and so we reviewed that case and reviewed it with, with our legal counsel, and the, the Supreme case, Supreme Court case actually does hold that the city must, may require hotels to keep the registry, that the city may inspect the registry, however, the hotel must be given an opportunity to object, and then a judge decides, the due process of, and that was really, as I understand it, of, of that whole case, is the reason why it was struck down is that it didn't provide that due process, the, the law basically said that the police could arrest the hotel manager for presenting, for denying access to the guest registry, and that was deemed unconstitutional, they have to be given due process if they object, they have to have their, their objection heard. The ordinance, as it's written today, and also is some revised language here in just a minute, but the ordinance as written today complies with that, that Supreme Court ruling, and, and actually, there was a, a case citing in there that, that gives us the language to, to clean that language up.
So just a couple of things about that case, and Kelvin did a really good job of just kind of summarizing what the, the court was looking at, and one of the things though too, that they were looking at, and we're just talking about the registry itself, and that, the, the court came down and said, well, that registry is really the, the operator or the hotel owners, that's their property, that's not, that's not the individual guest, so the, the whole claim that, hey, there's, there's this right of privacy that these guests have in this registry, well, that's not there, because that's the hotel owner's property. And so, as Kelvin said, the court came back and said, look, what we require is that there at least be an opportunity for the hotel owners to be able to object and go in front of a court and, and hear, you know, at least voice their concerns of why they don't want to hand over the registry, so. If there's more questions about that, I'm happy to answer, but.
We also had a, a comment from one hotel owner that, that it provides a, a tool that is welcomed to point out, or to point to, that gives them cover if they are concerned about the right to privacy, so if this, this ordinance basically says, yes, if the police ask for it, by ordinance, the city is saying you've got to give it to them, but then again, they can object, or, and then the police then have to go get an administrative warrant to, to, to view that. But it does, for some anyway, it says, it gives them the, the, the protection, if you will, if somebody says, well, hey, you violated my privacy, or asserts that you violated my privacy by giving this to the police, then, then you can say, no, the city made me, so go talk to the police, so. So there, there again, it's both sides of the coin. This, this red line modification, we've added some language in here based out of that Supreme Court case and what they, the case that they cited, and so this spells out and, and gives that, that right to the hotel owner or the hotel management staff, that if they object to give them the police, they registry, then they can, they can make that objection, they can put it, then we take it to a judge, and then they get, the judge gives them the opportunity to voice what their objections are, and then the judge decides whether or not we, the police have a rightful. And then the judge decides whether or not the police have a rightful access to that registry. Questions regarding what was required in the new registry? And I went back to the state regulations, and the state regulations are not specific as what's in the registry. So I suggest that we work with the hotel owners and determine what is best practices now and put that in place. So I think we should clarify that. Posting requirements for registered sex offenders, there was a couple of concerns that were raised in this area. First, if the information is captured, if they are merely seeking to stay, even if they do not stay, and that's not the intent, or at least from my perspective, not the intent. It was only for the purposes of gathering the information of posting. And if they do not stay the thirty-one days, then the requirement's not there for them to post. How long is the information kept? And if copies are required, that would be the guest registry and it's two years in the guest registry. And then there was a concern raised that cannot target registered sex offenders. And again, we reviewed with legal counsel, and their answer was that the three courts have held that the government has a legitimate interest in tracking the whereabouts of sex offenders. So that is legal, I guess, or it's not targeting.
Kelvin, can I interrupt you a second? I noticed some of you are looking at some documents. Do you have the latest copies and the revisions that you're looking at? Is that what you're doing?
No, actually, I was granted by my sister the outline of her concerns that she presented. And I'm trying to do my best to read and see what you adjusted.
The reason I ask is I know there were some previous copies out there that were actually beginning drafts of some of this stuff.
And this may be, I don't know. All I know is this is the best I have, and I'm trying to compare it to the changes, which I see some changes were actually read and implemented. I don't know that all of them have, which goes back to if we could do this again and make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, and we'll be happy to share the results. The, in the first draft, we required a photocopy of all guests' picture ID. And there were some concerns raised. And one was, first was maintaining photocopies violated some change of established policies as well as their contracts. And so we took that out of the first draft and before it even got to the second draft. And then all guests, including visitors, extremely difficult to comply with, and a point well taken. And so I suggest that we modify the language there that we only ask for guests to be registered, or guests included on the registry, and therefore the IDs captured of those that are issued a key to the room or access to the room through their key access.
Just a point of clarification for a non-hotel person, just a person who stays in a hotel. Ensure all guests or occupants that have issued an access to a room through keys or key card, provided they have picture ID verifying their identity. I'm responsible for that room. I sign in, I provide my credit card, my driver's license, my information, and car license. My mom comes over to visit, she goes into my room with me, she's not on the registry. She walked into the door with me, are you expecting her to be registered as well?
No.
No.
Only if the hotel issues her another key back.
Regardless of by hand the key to mom, and she puts it in, the hotel person didn't give her the key, therefore she's not on the registry.
It's still your responsibility as the room person.
Correct, and I agree with that.
You guys want to know who's in your rooms.
I mean, we do want to know who's in the room, but it's the person who is paying for that room that is responsible for that.
Right.
And I agree with that. Now, do we still watch the line? Absolutely.
Identification of vehicles and issuing parking passes to be displayed. There were some concerns raised regarding application to patrons of restaurants, bars, ballrooms, et cetera, and how they keep unauthorized guests out of their parking lot. And my response to that is this is only a requirement for the registered overnight guests. It doesn't apply to somebody that's just coming into the hotel for, to either dine at the restaurant or come to the ballroom, or come to a meeting, or those kinds of things. This is only to be captured when they're registering for an overnight stay.
That is one where I question the need for that. The best parking pass or tag is state license plate. You want to know who's in my parking lot, look at my license plate. Having used personal tags in a residential facility, don't change behavior, I'll give my tag to someone else. I mean, we barely get keys back, let alone parking tags. So that parking tag could be used over and over again. So it doesn't, I think it's a step of, I understand what you're trying to do, I guess, I'm thinking.
Yeah, the intent is to, as the comments say there, the intent is to basically eliminate, or quit, not eliminate or fully eliminate, but basically narrow the field of where they need to look and what they need to look for. So, you know, if the parking pass is there, it's more than likely they're there for legitimate reasons and their law abiding citizens. If you see cars coming and going, you know, then you have to question, okay, maybe possibly there's some other things going on. You know, if you see a car coming and going out of a room, are different cars coming and going out of a room? Then raises that suspicion, is there, are they dealing drugs out of that room? Or are they doing, you know, if they're carrying chainsaws into the room and leaving without the chainsaw, what's going on, you know, with those kinds of stuff?
I understand what you're trying to accomplish.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm going to say, that five percent that we're really trying to target with creating the ordinance and reduce that crime rate, we'll find a way around that. They will make a parking pass that will be just like the parking pass that institution has. They'll hang it on the windshield or on their beer, and then we'll find a way around it. So this is one where I would say that my experience having worked with parking passes in a residential format, it is more of a burden upon the hotel than it will be from a solution standpoint. We can get key cards back, let alone a parking pass.
So I'd kind of take the other stance of that, and I kind of watch the chief. What do you think about parking passes? Will they help law enforcement, sir?
If anything that's going to help us identify, you should be there. If you're looking for it, I don't disagree with the possibility of people, you know, maybe another one. I think there's ways around preventing that. But anything that makes it, so that it's more difficult for someone to pick up. I mean, if you look at it, for example, campgrounds or places like that, you're always required to have a pass when you go in there, no matter how much you do. And they're going around checking. I realize that's not necessarily easy for hotels to do. But it doesn't give, it doesn't give a big chance for anybody, even a hotel manager, to go, that's strange, that car doesn't have a pass. That's a little bit, I don't know, aggressive, so there are advantages and disadvantages in everything.
And I know that having one parking lot, one parking card, those types of things, I know exactly what you're talking about. But we're also right next to a restaurant, and ours is a restaurant. America's a very busy restaurant. And you know what? We partner with all American. They get overflow, guess who they partner with? They're going to have a parking tax. So is that really going to honor the result that you want? Probably not, because you're probably not looking for parking on the first place. So we're part of that ninety-five percent. Then maybe we're not going to have part of the five percent at some point in our hotel. But what this ordinance does is it adds a burden onto us for something that doesn't impact, for something that doesn't really help you for us. Now, I think there's probably other solutions and other ways to approach it, but I don't know exactly what all of those things are. So you and I have a camp to sit down and really talk through some of those things.
There's a flip side of this, too. You can take that parking pass, and the car's sitting there, and it's got a parking pass, whether it belongs or was manufactured, as you're pointing out. If you run the plate and find out that that plate belongs to somebody that's actually got a warrant against them, guess where they're staying? Now we know where they're at. So that's the other side of the picture, too.
Well, yeah, I've stayed places where there's an event going on next door, and they want a parking pass in my car because I'm staying there because all the people going to the event are slipping over into their parking lot parking, number one. Number two, and I've been in education a while, as you know, and kids are always going to figure out a way to beat the system. But, so that's your experience, and certainly at collegiate level, I've seen a lot of people making fake parking passes because it's, but I'm kind of, you know, we've got a particular, not yours, but we've got a particular hotel that's a hub of criminal activity, right? Whatever it is, if those people are coming to that hub to do drugs, buy and sell stolen property, that type of thing. And we see a whole bunch of cars there during the day that aren't, don't have parking pass. Number one, we're more suspicious of that particular location being a hub. And number two, it may be a little bit discouraging to those people, hey, they're starting to track who's coming in and out of this parking. So it's a little bit of a deterrent, I think, too. That's my two cents. I'm not going to, we've got a long way to go.
Yeah, let me talk.
You're right. And that's the only, we need to... Cooperation with PE on investigations, and one of the comments was that they're already happily doing this, and we recognize that, and it's much appreciated. And we hope to gain this support by all. Unfortunately, at this point, we do not have that five percent that we keep talking about. Additional requirements upon police chief declaration, in their professional opinion, that the establishment is being used for criminal activity, including parking area lighting, line of sight, trimming bushes, video surveillance. And concern was raised regarding the cost of this. And part of the comment or response to that is that this is only in the case where criminal activity has already taken a foothold, and then aimed at specific actions tailored to the situation. So it's not intended to be causing the hotels that don't have a problem to spend money unnecessarily. It's only intended to attack a specific situation, so that was kind of the thought. And there was some debate about requiring this for all. I don't know, so that appears to be some middle ground there. Swimming pools, the concern was, concern regarding another fee. And no, this is not another fee. This is again in the business license, licensure section. And so it is part of the business licensure. As far as it relates to the lodging code, yes, if your only business was a swimming pool, then it would be an additional fee, it would be the licensure fee for that swimming pool. But swimming pool in this case, as part of a lodging code or a lodging establishment, is not an additional fee. It's just part of the business license. And then we go through, I think that's probably about all of the comments, but we go through several of the standards there, what we're looking for, added those standards. And again, they're mirroring what the state standards that are already in effect are. And again, aimed at safety and sanitation. And then the police, we also point out that we are also working on a related piece disturbance code. It is not part of this code. It's actually under chapter thirty-six, which is the offenses and miscellaneous provisions. And we are proposing through the Community Development Council Committee to add a section thirty-six ninety-six that starts with this section here about basically not allowing a property, or property become a nuisance or used for criminal activity. And this is, you know, addresses some of the questions about the lodging as far as applying to other businesses and those kinds of things. And that's meant to address part of that, is that, yes, we want to stop that crime wherever it is. And so this is adding that section as well. And it's under the police powers code as opposed to the business license because it applies to business, applies to properties that aren't necessarily issued a business license. So it's another section to help in that thing. Anything else we want to discuss? Want to go back to, you want to, where do you want to go from here?
Josh, is that last word we're going to discuss? I still have some tools for the police to help that owner if there's something illegal going on. And they say, we're not allowing that, but we can't deal with it.
Yes.
Are you actually making tools that the police get able to deal with that?
Yes.
And that in reference to, like, say, apartment. And, you know, they say, well, you're the apartment owner, you shouldn't allow that. Well, there's, your hands are tied on situations to do anything about it. So you have to be careful making that ordinance and saying, if you can't allow that, if there's not also the ordinance that deals with it, gives you tools to deal with that.
Yeah, I didn't do the whole ordinance, but yes, there's a section in there that basically provides them the opportunity to evict the people that are causing the criminal activity. And so that, again, gives you the basis, if you will, that, hey, I've got to because the law, the ordinance now is telling me that I can't allow this, so now I have to evict. Does that make sense? And I say that...
I've been recently through this specifically in my experience.
And it is my understanding, and I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is, if they are doing illegal opportunities or illegal, illegal activity, you do have the right to evict. Am I correct? Yeah. And, you know...
Usually you wind up going through the judges at the end.
Yeah.
And the right to evict immediately or start the eviction process?
There's typically a process, yeah.
Again, they have to have their due process. And then some of this, too, is in some cases, we have difficulty with some property owners that it's not people that are rightful, have a rightful or a right to that property. They're not tenants. But they will allow the property to be used for illegal activity. And the property owner will not trespass or issue a trespass against those people. And so then that inhibits our ability. And so then that inhibits our ability. This now would create that, that cooperation, if you will, where, you know, you're responsible for helping us. Does that make sense? Any other questions?
Your honor, I'd ask one more thing. Like the, Tom, just a second here. Kelly, if you, if you don't, Kelly, if you don't mind, and I don't know how to ask you this, but I have, I have some respect for your dad. And I noticed tonight he's been speaking, he's been chomping at the bit.
I had strict orders for him to stay quiet, but if you want to give him...
I think, I think...
By all means, that's on you then, not me.
My mom also told me that comes from her sister.
Yeah, so by all means, if you want to...
If you do not want to let it happen, that's fine. But I just want him to know that he's welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, I'm okay. Thank you though.
Mr. Oldman, I'm sorry, I did not know your name.
Okay.
I want to answer your question real quick. You mentioned something about standard business practice?
Yeah.
A lot of this stuff is already standard business practice. It's already code somewhere.
Yeah.
So we're actually duplicating, duplication because the county did a lot of that stuff, okay? Two of the things that concerns me on the standard business practice. One, you have changed. Thank you for that Supreme Court case. You changed your language a little bit. Thank you. And the other one is your AED.
AED.
The AED requirement. There is no standard hotel business practice for AEDs and pools and things like that. So what you're doing is you're, if I can say to you, is a test case. Whether it works or fails, therefore you're putting a lot of liability on the hotels. If there's a standard business practice for AEDs, the hotels would probably be already doing it. So that's one of my major concerns about your comment about standard business practice. So the AEDs is the major concern for our property.
Tom, hold up just a quick second here. Do you have any idea, this has been bandied about in regards to AEDs and there's something in the state statute that hold harmless when somebody's trying to do something, I, I've got the right, get the good Samaritan law.
Good Samaritan clause.
Does that come into effect here? And relieve that liability?
I, well, I really look into it, to be honest with you. I don't know that I can address that right now.
Okay.
But I can, I made a note here to book into that.
Tom, we'll get that. Just to make sure.
And several of you mentioned you're doing this all for safety and security for our guests. As a hotel operator, one of our major concerns is carbon monoxide. And there's nothing in this ordinance about carbon monoxide. If you would ask any hotel owner or operator what they fear, but you did not ask the hotels what your problems were and what your problems are and what are you working on? So that's, if it's really about safety, you need to talk to the hotels to find out some of the issues about safety and what the hotels are already doing about the safety issues, such as...
We got carbon monoxide, yes, for everybody else, but I've kind of got a little bit to do with it. Because people leave vehicles running all night close to an entrance.
You know, Hotel B, okay? It could be an enclosed quarter hotel. We'll exclude the exterior. Hotel Oprah B, the guy checks into his room, opens up his windows a little bit because hotels are sometimes always closed, always stuffy, all right? And the guy checks in next door to him or parks next door to him, leaves his truck running all night to keep it warm or whatever. Guess, guess what? If he, if he's got his fan on in that one room, it draws that carbon monoxide into the room.
So is the answer, combination fire and carbon monoxide?
That's what this property's answer was.
That's what...
That's what my property's answer is, is carbon monoxide. And, but also educating hotel guests about what that beep it is because sometimes the carbon monoxide tester will go off. Hotel guests, there's no smoke around here, the darn thing's broken. You hang it down, put it down, guess what? All right? So it'd be a good idea to get the standard business practices from the hotels if we're going to use standard business practices. Mr. Lehman, answer your question, why now? Because we were blindsided by the newspaper article that we had unsafe hotels.
That wasn't the intent of the question. The question is, is the hotel here, is I'm well aware of what's going on in this industry in this city. It has come to our attention now, it's come, you know, it's just like government has to step in now to make the motion without somebody on the outside doing it. And that was the intent of the question is why didn't hotels come to us earlier? We have the records clear back in two thousand seventeen that this is starting. And that's, that was just the question. It's a two-way street. I think that's water over the dam, as I mentioned, at that point. We're done with this and we need to go forward and work together. That's the attempt. That, it's a two-way street.
Yeah, yes it is. Yes, it is. And then you've addressed the registry concerns that we have. I mean, there's my hotel, there's meetings and events, you know, and I can't even show parking pass to every person that comes up in there.
Hey, Tom, can I, can you, on this very, very point here, and she brought it up earlier about when her mother would come to the room or whatever. And then she made the statement that we watch very carefully. So we're talking about the video and back to the video portion that we have in our ordinance. If that would have happened, are you willing to share that video that we can see who actually went into that room? I think that's the intent of the video.
I don't think, I don't think we're talking about video here.
No.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the parking passes.
Okay. I stopped you there because...
And I'm going to give you an example about video real quick that kind of concerns me with your law because this happened at my hotel, all right? A gentleman called and said something was broken into his car. He called the police right away. The police asked me about the video. I said, I'll take a look at it. Well, I want the video. Well, let me look at it. That's all, that's what I did. I looked at the video. His car was not bothered that night. Nothing was wrong with that night. I went to this gentleman's room and said, sir, there's nothing on the video. He said, you have cameras? I said, yeah. And he goes, oh crap, I was where I was not supposed to be last night and that's where I think my stuff got stolen. All right? So he said, I don't want to take this any farther. Do we have to do a police report? I said, that's up to you and the police department. All right? I think the case where, when the police came to me right away and said, hey, I want the video, I said, well, let's see what's going on. And I looked at it. All right? Did I gain a customer? And did I do something wrong? I don't know. I mean, that's, that's where you're putting the spine line on the video, on the hotels about what video give up and what video you want. Any life safety, any life safety video thing? We'd get up, give it up in a minute. Anybody that comes in and says, my brother stole my car and he was in your parking lot? Eh, let's get some more information before we, before we do this.
Is that wrong, Matt? Chief, sir?
You know, I know, we need to say that.
Yeah.
For the experiment that's brought us all about. One of the examples I had given earlier, we have life, or life safety issues. We need to affect and prevent as fast as we possibly can. Because, and there's been multiple instances of it. And we need to get that video back to him. We can see that, we can get it out to all law enforcement, no manual for, and then for vehicle or a, a person. Many times we have video from different resources in the community. We shared this internally with the department. There was, there was one this morning. An officer said, hey, I have this key. And here's video of a person who's been in this car. Now there are officers that work, and you go, oh yeah, I know that guy, I've talked to him, you know, that's... That's not how it's been identified. Some of the establishments aren't doing it. So we don't get that video. And also sometimes, too, we know that we can trust to look for the video, but we're supposed to, we can't. So that's why many times you have to have the video where we know we're supposed to be looking for. So that would be my...
Are you, what would, you're never opposed to them standing there with, I mean, if you can review the video right there, you can do it together, right?
Right, many times, an owner of, any...
Right.
...video, there's so many different videos down there. We need them to, to print the video, make it for copying, whatever the situation is. Somebody's learning how to, um, try all of these things. Yeah, we're going to need their assistance. I think we'll come back later after they review the video. And for the copying, we'll get more information.
Now, now this, this next complaint is probably on a more personal side for me because I have, it's not my hotel, but I run an older hotel. And when it comes to the multiple lodging content guests, our best practice is the registered guest gets the key. So if you register and you don't register your wife and your wife comes up there, she's not getting the key. All right? That's the best practice of hotels and that's how we do. That's how we do it at the property, okay? So when it comes to keys. But on the flip side of that, I don't want to say flip side of it.
Too late.
If we start requiring extra information that is not already standard, driver's license, when the hotel walks in, when the guest walks into the hotel, what are they going to think of our town and the community if we're taking all these extra steps? Where am I staying? What's wrong with this community?
What are...
And what we're doing is every single guest is going to get that treatment.
What's extra, extra steps that you're calling? What are you considering extra steps?
Run a dri, run a copy of their driver's license?
I was in a hotel in Iowa this week. Name, address, a copy of my ID.
Did they run a copy of it?
Yes, they did. And they also did my credit card. And they also got my driver's license, or not, my car license. And if I didn't have it, and I asked the question because we're going through this, if I didn't have it with me, I carry it on my phone. I got to go out and get it. They will not let you have the key until they have all those built.
Okay, well, I stayed at Tree Hotels last week and not one of them ran a copy of it.
Yeah, there is, there is the variance there. And part of this picture here, I think, had to...
And, and there were three different brands, by the way, and I chose three brands of Sedalia, Missouri.
Now...
Just to see what the experience was.
In the current draft, we've eliminated the photocopy. We're just asking that you, you ask for that ID to verify their identity, which I believe is part of the state regs that you can, it does require...
It is, but, but do I ask you the ID of every single guest that walks in that hotel? No, I don't.
Well, yeah, just the registered guest. Anybody that, this current draft is only asking that you ask that of the, the people that you issue a key.
Kel, Kel, the page back while you examine the strike.
Right, that's the best practices. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
Yeah, but no, we don't take the time to draw, we don't take the time to run a copy of the driver's license.
But I'm saying that's what he's revising.
Oh, okay.
So you're good with this now?
Right.
But the customers concerned, the guests concerned, that's what I'm concerned about, is the perception that we're going to be giving the public, already the perception that we've given the public by the newspaper articles, when there's a lot of us run good hotels.
So, no doubt, that... I think part of this picture also, and it's for everybody here, is the city hasn't got, as we discovered, it's not just with this situation. But earlier on, we had another situation with another place. And we found we don't have any power to do anything. And that's part of what this ordinance is really all about, is to give us some more power to be able to handle this. And the ultimate thing is these people that come in, your guests are our guests, and as a council, we are responsible for those people that come into our city.
Any other ordinance, ten minutes, Tom? Our lady, ordinance?
To members of the city council, from Mayor John Katie. New appointment to Animal Advisory Control Board. Garnetta Sullivan, sixteen eighteen West Eighteenth Street, ending June twenty-two, completing Mary Buckley's term. And then there was a correction where we had appointed Central Business and Cultural District Board of Director, Darian Weeks, one oh eight East Fifth. It was a three-year term ending July twenty-four, but their correction, it should be ending in January twenty-four.
Motion to approve, second.
Law favor?
Aye.
Pause. Dr. License?
Okay, we have three on here. If you remember, the last meeting, we had a license that came in after the packet was done. So you had extended them until this meeting. So it's for Kathy Getz doing business break time, three oh eight three, eight oh eight East Broadway for a package liquor. Chris Patterson doing business rush hour, thirteen twenty South Limit for a package liquor and Sunday sale. And Gloria Ayala doing business El Esplan, twenty-four hundred South Limit and liquor by the drink and Sunday sale.
Motion to approve and block, second.
Law favor?
Aye.
Anybody, the council members like to make a few comments, please?
I'd like to say, I'm giving an invitation to everyone here. The one hundredth birthday party in a covered park this coming Saturday, starting at eleven AM to seven PM. Lots of activities happening and going on there. So please come and join us for the birthday party. Also, I'd like to ask Chief Harold, is our fire station up, ready to go? Spits up and all that kind of good stuff on Hancock?
Is Hancock Street Fire Department looking well or has everything been done?
First of all, it's pretty nice. Mobility has been moved to some spread locations. The station's worked well. Not much damage. My phone is bad, it's not stable.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Tina. Have to, have to just get that done. Took a lot longer than we needed.
Well, you know that, that thing called COVID, just the...
We always worry about that, yeah.
I know.
You have to remind that the state fair is coming up. I'm thankful that this year we actually get to have a coal fair and all of that. So we are going to have a booth there to kind of add to our branding and getting the story out and those kinds of things. And I think all of council is going to be there for the opening ceremony and then all of council, I think, is going to be there for the parade.
Well, Bob, what time?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, Bob.
Yeah.
Eleven. Bob asked me after I asked you, eleven o'clock Thursday, twelve. Children's barn yard or children's barn yard in the Ag Building, right?
We had a good group of us want to go to Vandalia last week for a M M L conference. Tom, you want to make a comment about that? It's a very good meeting.
It was a legislative update that the council attended. There's jokes about seals.
Tom was elected secretary.
And I was elected as the secretary for the central region for M M L. It was a good, it was very informative. I love these, those types of meetings. A lot of them have to do with some certain training or some education thing, but this one was about legislative things.
I must have a question. Are we going to have any more conversations between the stakeholders on this ordinance? And the police department and the people who are concerned about this issue, are, are we done, ready to vote?
Elder?
I always heard several people spoke up saying that stakeholders need to talk.
So we have to be, it can't be a violation of sunshine law, we're going to get together. We need to see, uh, parents' parents, and we can invite people in, it's going to be, even if it's a non-council meeting. Once they get that, that, that set-
Then, John, when we, when we're going to have that meeting, and who's going to coordinate getting those votes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I, I, I'm sorry, John, who's going to coordinate getting that meeting set up and the discussion?
I can't go, I can't give you an answer, I guess.
Or when?
But that's, it's all the same.
And it will be entered, it will be signed before we come and propose, right?
Yes, I would say yes.
Fair enough.
I mean, it's ridiculous, you do not have to be able to vote.
For those, for those of you that are left here, it is, I appreciate you all coming tonight. They are taken. Thank you.
Motion to move to closed-door sessions, uh, students-
Motion go, go to closed doors, I assume?
Yes.
We need a second? Second?
I motion, please second.
Who's?
I motion, I'd be the second.
Okay, got you. Will call?
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson is absent, Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson? Cross? Foster is absent, and Bliss?
Uh, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Hey, did you all notice the Democrats tonight?
Here it is. Oh, God.
I have got to go over here for a second.
Where are you going? Lucas, is it cold in here? Don't ask with it. Don't ask with it.
That's our, uh, that's our, oh, uh, what we're combating for, that's what we're-
I'll read them. Okay, is Jennifer coming?
Where's Steve at? You walk in, you slower? Second.
Spit yourself out.
Call the city back over.
We have, uh, we have one item to, uh, consider on the agenda, is the consideration of a deal or take matter that is just that we discussed in closed door. Um, so, Arlene, will you continue reading yours?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one eighteen, an ordinance authorizing a roadway easement conveyance between the city of Soudalia, Missouri and the county of Pettis, Missouri. Whereas the city of Soudalia, Missouri has received a proposal from the county of Pettis, Missouri for a temporary and permanent roadway easement conveyance over property at an agreed upon amount as contained in the conveyance document, has set forth in Exhibit A and attached hereto and incorporated by reference. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Soudalia, Missouri as follows. Section one, the council of the city of Soudalia, Missouri approves and accepts the terms as contained in the roadway easement conveyance in substantially the same form and content as proposed in Exhibit A. Section two, the city administrator is authorized to execute, and the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file in her office the said roadway easement conveyance after recording said conveyance and ordinance with Pettis County Recorder of Deeds. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force in effect from and after its passage and approval.
Second reading, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one eighteen, an ordinance authorizing a roadway easement conveyance between the city of Soudalia, Missouri and the county of Pettis, Missouri. Whereas the city of Soudalia, Missouri has received a proposal from the county of Pettis, Missouri for a temporary and permanent roadway easement conveyance over property at an agreed upon amount as contained in the conveyance document, has set forth in Exhibit A and attached hereto and incorporated by reference. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Soudalia, Missouri as follows. Section one, the council of the city of Soudalia, Missouri approves and accepts the terms as contained in the roadway easement conveyance in substantially the same form and content as proposed in Exhibit A. Section two, the city administrator is authorized to execute, and the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file in her office the said roadway easement conveyance after recording said conveyance and ordinance with Pettis County Recorder of Deeds. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force in effect from and after its passage and approval.
Final passage, second.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham? Dawson is absent, Bogus? Richardson? Cross? Foster is absent, and Bliss?
Yes.
Six S and two S.
Kelvin, do you have anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Will call please?
We don't need a word.